If you can meet yourself, if you're not talking, if there's gonna be a lot of noise, just so we take it a good recording. Appreciate that. They will appreciate that. All right, Chris, I guess we're ready to get started. Bring the Rockland planning board to order. Audience, participants, and general public should be aware that any or all portions of this open meeting may be recorded by audio and video resources. Although some of this meeting may be rebroadcast periodically by WIPS or other outlets. Persons wanting a DVD copy of this meeting should contact WIPS or the Board of Selectmen's Office. A small fee will be charged. All right. Since we have a quorum, I guess the first thing on the agenda is that we should reorganize the board. Since we did not do it last time. So what is the? How does the board feel?
I'll make a motion that Mike Corbett be nominated and elected as chairman.
Does anybody want to second? Anybody want to second that?
I'll second. That's my problem, so I'm all set. Chris.
All right, so we have a first and a second. All in favor of Mike Corbett being as chairman? Take a vote. John?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
All right. I accept. I accept it. All right. I make a motion to have John Lucas be vice chair.
Second.
And we have a first and second on that. We'll take a vote. Mike Corbett votes yes. Jared?
Yes.
All right, that is a vote.
John didn't vote.
Yes.
Do you accept John?
Yes.
All right, for clerk, nominate Jared.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor of Jared being the clerk? Mike Corbett votes yes?
John votes yes.
Jared votes yes.
If Jared accepts, then.
Thank you.
All right. All right. I guess we'll have the continuation of 10:15 Hingham Street. Up next, so who wants to start, you guys?
I'll start. Again, I'm Don Bracken, the engineer for the project from Bracken Engineering. Also with me tonight is Dennis Roth, that you can see on the screen, he's the architect for the project. And Jim Rader, the applicant, I see he's on with his iPhone. Since the last meeting, we made an attempt to address all the issues that were raised at that meeting. There were several reports from town departments that we attempted to address. I hope, hopefully we addressed most of them. First is, you know, the AMRI engineering report. We submitted revised plans, which I'll go through the details of what those revisions were. And revised drainage calculations, I believe we've satisfied the comments or any concerns that were raised in that review. I also spoke with Deputy Chief Thomas Seeny regarding his review. I sent him the information from the sweat path analysis that the traffic consultant provided to the planning board. And I have not received any further feedback from him. I did follow up with an email on Friday. I don't know if the board has seen anything from him since then. I also talked with David Taylor of the Sewer Department. We sent more detailed plans, which are in the current set regarding the sewer, proposed sewer connection. Also traded some emails with Joseph Lapointe of the Water Department. He was on vacation up until Monday this week. He did tell me that they were having their own engineers review the, review the plans. I have not heard back anything since then. Not sure if any, any of these departments have submitted anything. I do know that the DPW submitted some additional comments that Chrissy had sent to us. As far as the plan changes go, I'm pretty sure I can share my drawings this meeting. Let me share or I can pull up the plans. Did I do it right? Can everyone see that?
See it.
Okay. The first change that we have, we discussed the flood zone, flood zones on the property at the last meeting. Since that last meeting, we did discover that preliminary flood zone maps based on more current information from FEMA were issued in 2018 that were supposed to become effective July of 2020. However, FEMA did resend those maps. The only reason they rescinded the maps is because it was part of another package with the Cape Cod watershed study. And other communities couldn't get their regulations or what they were supposed to do in order to adopt the map soon enough. FEMA did say though, that you know, the information on the preliminary maps is still the most, the latest available data and can be used by towns or agencies in reviewing or governing floodplain work or construction. We had shown similar flood zones on the first set of plans that we established on our own. We have, you know, we're not going to wait for the final map, so we did submit a letter of map amendment to FEMA last week. And we did additional hydrology calculations in the stream to the west to show that it didn't impact our drainage system, which ultimately discharges to that stream. The other change is we added a small two-foot-high retaining wall along the edge of the right of way in order to contain the drainage within the wet swill that runs parallel with the road. In part to address one of the comments from Pat Brennan, so that we would have 12 inches of freeboard so that the water level would be contained on the property. The other thing that we did was for the drainage, we added some additional treatment. If you recall, we took some total suspended solids credit for street sweeping. In this round, we didn't take any credit for the street sweeping. What we added were storm scepter hydrodynamic oil gas separators, which have a very high efficiency for TSS removal. So we revised the drainage calculations to reflect that. So we're providing, you know, additional treatment, more so than what we had done in the past. As I said, we added more information on the sewer lines. Questions that were raised regarding the architectural plans. I'll flip to those. The AC condenser units are on the roof behind the facades that are labeled tenant one and tenant two. In the low left-hand corner, you can see the layout of that from the roof perspective. We also removed a door that was shown on the rear of the building and the door that was shown on the side. So access will be strictly from the front of the building. And I did see the comment from the DPW, and it was discussed at the last meeting. But somehow I forgot to add it to the plan. Slope granite curving at the entranceway and the roundings for the driveway on Hingham Street. So that, that will be something we will add to the plan in order to address your concerns and DPW's concerns. And Bob Micho, the traffic consultant, is not here tonight. I think he, he pretty much, you know, said, I think, everything that needed to be said at the last meeting. I'll just defer to his page 14 on his conclusions and what his recommendations are for the site. And hopefully, if we get approval, those recommendations can just be incorporated into the approval. I think that's, that's it for the changes. Everything else, I think, is pretty much the way we reviewed it at the last meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Have you received the latest thing from Dave Taylor?
No.
We actually got it yesterday.
Yeah, he got it.
Oh, Dave, well, Dave Taylor Sewer, right?
Yes, Highway.
Yeah. Oh, he's in Highway. Okay, so he did say about, that's, that's what I was referring to, DPW with the slope granite curving. Unless you have something that says something other than the curving.
It says, you know, install the curving from lot line to lot line.
Okay.
Not, not just at the opening, the whole length of the property, commercial and residential, actually, it's required.
Even like around the parking area?
I would assume it's on the, would be along Hingham Street.
Yeah, I was assuming just the roundings and then once we get in onto the property.
Requirements for all new development, commercial and residential, installation of SV4 granite curving from lot line to lot line. Installation of
Yeah.
Asphalt five feet wide, three inches thick. All installations need to be ADA compliant, including ADA ram square required. No exceptions on installation of curving in our blocks rest solely on the highway department.
Right, so again, I'm assuming their jurisdiction is only within the roadway. And that there is no sidewalk on our side of the road, so I'm not sure about comment about ADA compliance. Obviously, on the site itself, we'll have ADA compliance.
Correct. Probably should double check on him, because he says he wants curving lot line to lot line.
And I, I actually, I don't understand exactly what he means by that, but if he, if he said within the entire lot, I could see he probably referring to parking and everything else, but.
I would assume he was, he'd be talking on the street.
Right.
And not, and not making you put granite curving in your parking lot.
Yeah, correct.
More for, more for plowing and everything else like that on the roof. But I'm just assuming.
Like I said, we're happy to put curbing anywhere within the town's road. I don't know what more I can say on that.
I would tend to think that what Mike said along the roadway itself, but you might just want to confirm it with Dave Taylor.
Are you talking about replacing the existing curbway in the road? Do you think that's what he's talking about? I mean, I can't imagine that would be.
I don't know. So that's why I say just confirm with what he said. He did send this out yesterday, and I'm not 100% certain what he means.
Okay.
Because, you know, as he says, lot line to lot line, I'm assuming he means on the public road. Not what you're doing on your private property.
Okay, yeah, I know, yeah. I can't, I can't imagine from my experience that, you know, we would be required to do road and the work in the public road like that as part of the site plan approval, but.
That's something we should double check, you know, I mean, I have, like I said, he just sent it out yesterday.
Well, we were, we were hoping that we'd be at a point to close the meeting, so I'm not, I, I guess if that were the case, then are you thinking you'd want to continue the meeting again?
I, I would think, because we haven't heard back from the fire. You know, Deputy Chief there on, on anything, because was he satisfied with everything about the fire truck getting in there?
I don't know if he was or not. I haven't heard from him since I sent him that information.
Because I know before he had a concern. I don't know if you had spoken to him on that and he addressed it, but we haven't seen.
I did, yeah, when I spoke to him, it didn't sound like he had reviewed any of the traffic information to, to see the sweat path analysis, so I would assume that, you know, when he reviews it, he's going to be satisfied with it.
You know, because what do we else we have? Because we, we haven't received, we haven't received anything back from Water Sewer.
Okay.
And Fire since the last meeting to say things have been addressed or in the works.
Okay.
And also, do you have an agreement or anything for the easement? For that?
We don't have anything in writing. I think I had requested at the last meeting that that could be a condition and that it would be recorded after Mr. Rader takes ownership of the property, but if this is going to get continued, I could ask Mr. Rader to have his attorney draft something up.
You're going to go back to zoning board after we approve this.
Well, we did get the zoning board variance and the condition was, you know, a final set of plans to them. I don't, I don't think that they have to reopen it or reapprove it. I just think that they have to make sure that it's still substantially the same as what they had approved. There's nothing in the permit that says that the hearing would be reopened. We do, we do still have to go to the Conservation Commission, so we, we, we still have that process to go through. So as much as we would like to close it, it's not going to affect the schedule if we had to continue it, although obviously, we'd like to close it, but I understand.
When do you plan on to try to stop? This year?
Well, the, it, I'm not exactly sure when they try to stop, but right now, the applicant doesn't own the property, so he's under due diligence timeframe, and I don't know exactly what that is. Jim could probably chime in on that, but that's what we're working toward, is trying to get permits so he can purchase it.
Can you, can you hear me, Don?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, we're, we're running out of time on the due diligence, so we, that's another reason we were kind of hoping we could get a decision tonight so that all we have left to do is get Conservation Commission approval, but we want to start construction immediately. You know, assuming we get all the permits and so.
What have you, what has Water Department told you as far, they want to sit down with you with the water board?
They, they said that they have given it to their own engineer to review. And like I said, Mr. Lapointe was on vacation up until Monday, so I'm sure he didn't have time to get any information back or respond.
How about the Sewer Department? Was theirs pretty much the same thing?
I, yeah, pretty much. I think we provided all the information that they needed. Which, you know, we, the original information was typically what we would show on a permitting set, and we added a lot, lot more detailed information that we would normally show on a construction plan set, so in order to, you know, address their concerns that not enough information was shown, so you know, I, I would expect that would satisfy them, and I mean, at some point with the sewer and the water, I mean, we do have to go back to them, you know, prior for a building permit in order to get the actual approvals for both of those connections, so you know, no matter what, we are going to have to address whatever their concerns are in order to get those permits, so they, they certainly will have their own opportunity and process to, to, to make sure that whatever we're proposing meets, meets whatever they're going to require.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a suggestion?
Go ahead, John.
That we go ahead and pretty much approve everything and then would, with three major people without approval, if everything else besides just receiving an approval from Water Sewer and Fire, if we had to continue it, then at least it'd be a very brief thing and everything else would be taken care of. We wouldn't have to go through it. I know Pat Brennan's got a number of things. I don't know if he's been satisfied with everything.
Let's hear, let's hear from Pat. Pat Brennan.
All right, yeah, Pat Brennan with AMRI Engineers. As Mr. Bracken had mentioned, I had submitted a letter to the board on August 6th. Since that time, Mr. Bracken revised the plans. And I reviewed those revised plans and documents and submitted another letter of August 20th, which essentially says he's addressed my concerns. He's, he's changed the plans to ask for two waivers. And they are typical waivers that this board sees on these private projects all the time. One is for the use of the high-density polyethylene pipe in lieu of concrete. The other is for the use of a subsurface drainage system instead of open air. And as you know, on these smaller commercial sites, there's just not a lot of room to do an open-air basin, so we typically see these, these subsurface systems under the parking lot, which is what we have in, you know, with this project. He had addressed all of my other concerns. The only other one, you know, the one that I would point out was my first comment about the, it's a net fill on the project. So they're looking at somewhere between 40 and 60 truckloads of material coming in. But with the wet ones and the dust of groundwater, they need to fill in order to get their separation from groundwater for the drainage system, so that's, that's the reasoning for that. But other than that, the, you know, the changes have essentially addressed my concerns. So I'm, I'm pretty good with the project at this point.
All right, thank you, Pat. Jared, do you have any comments? Jared, do you have any comments?
You got it? I'm on mute. No, no, it all, it all looks good to me. I just, I echo what, what John said. I am in agreement with John.
All right. John, you going to say something?
Have you got any idea where your tenants are going to be?
We do not.
Just looking at it on your park, and it looks like you've got 23 parking spaces. You're going to be tight on parking space. I don't know how many employees you're going to have on this thing. But my calculations, at least at this point, require 17 parking spaces for retail. Which leaves you six for, excuse me, for employees.
That would be. We think that's more than enough, given the kinds of uses that we're going to have for the property.
All right, because you're going to lose one space that you've got marked for snow removal. Over on the right-hand side, the way I'm looking at it. You've got it marked for snow removal, so you really can't count it as parking space, but you still should be all right with the numbers. Looking at your handicap spot, I think you've got that backwards. Most handicapped vans, the door would open on the right-hand side. And you've got that space for the loading, unloading zone for the wheelchair or something on the left-hand side. I don't know whether the building commissioner is going to approve that.
Again, you know, usually when we get in a situation like that, the reason it's on that side is so that it coincides with the ramp and the front sidewalk. If, if that was a situation on a van, they could back in and still have access to that striped area, so I would imagine that's what they would do in that, in that situation.
You might just keep that in the back of your mind, so that if the building commissioner does say something about it. And I noticed you've got, the handicap sign is on the curb. I don't think that's allowed. You can put it there, certainly. You can put it on the ground as well, but it does have to be on the building, I believe, or on a signpost.
Yeah, I mean, well, that's, that would be, the intent would be to put it on the, on a signpost, yeah.
What you've got on the plan, that's all.
Yeah, the, it should say really, not the sign, but the post is going to be in, set in the curb itself.
All right.
I think there's a detail of that as well.
I think that's pretty much what I've got, what I saw, Mike.
Was there a reason why you removed the two side doors, the two exit doors?
Yeah, well, the, the door at the back, we had issues with grading. We would have had to increase the fill on that side. Or built a wall or something. So we decided it was best just, just to remove it. And then once that was removed, Dennis Roth can speak to it if you want more information, but then it was decided to move the other side door as well.
You know, we evaluated the building and the, the two doors more than fulfill the exiting requirements for what the anticipated uses would be. So in response to what Don was talking about and other things, the, those doors were removed.
And you still made the requirement for egress and everything like that?
Yes, 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 we do. These, these spaces actually are relatively small in regard to the tags of requirements, and so for all anticipated uses, these doors are more than suffice in terms of area and travel distance.
Thank you. I see Charlie joined us. Charlie, do you have any comments?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I apologize. I was on an assignment for the Fire Department. I don't, I, I am coming in late, and I'm sure the traffic was covered extensively. That would be my only concern, is what we're doing about traffic wise, that intersection, you know, backed by Dunkin' Donuts and all that is, is a problem already, and I'm just wondering what the traffic plan is, and if you've already covered it, you can just give me a brief synopsis, and I would be okay with that.
I can take a shot at that. Yeah, we, we talked quite a bit about the benefit to having the connection with the property to the south, so that people would have a choice to use the satellites, you know, to exit the property or enter the property. I'd have to refresh my memory on the traffic counts, but with the 5,000-square-foot retail building, I believe that the conclusion was there would be no reduction in the level of service, you know, at any of the intersections. The traffic consultant that we used for this project was the same consultant used for Wendy's that's being built right now, Home Depot, auto dealership across the street, so, you know, fortunately, we're able to piggyback on his knowledge of the, of the entire area. Other than that, I would have to thumb through the report to get any more specific than that.
Okay.
We lost it, Charlie.
Okay, what is the arrangement with? No, yes?
You're not in a good location. I lost you.
Okay, how about now?
Yes.
Okay, so my question was, and I apologize, in regards to the abutters property and exiting through their property, what is the arrangement that is, is done with that?
Okay, the applicant for this project is also the owner, has interest in the abutting project. That makes this sort of unique and beneficial, so he will be creating that easement, you know, for the benefit of this new parcel. I'm sure that will probably be held in different entities, but you know, he has the legal authority to create and grant the easement.
Okay, very good. Very good. Very good. I would say at this point, then, I am good for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. All right, so what's the board, what's the flavor of the board here?
I think maybe we should grant the waivers that Pat Brennan spoke about. Unless there's something that I've forgotten, or something wrapped this up pretty good, just leave it. That will continue it till we get fire department approval, water and sewer approval, and see some type of agreement on that easement. I tend to think fire department approval might contain something to the effect that that easement be, you know, finalized.
Hey, would you like to, are you making that a motion, John?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we give them a waiver that they, to use the HCPE pipe instead of the concrete pipe.
Yep.
I'll second.
And a waiver for the subsurface?
You wanna do it all, I wanna do it too, I don't care.
Yeah, we might as well include that.
All right, I'll make, add to that motion, the waiver to use the subsurface infiltration system.
And I will second that amended motion.
All right, so we have a motion and seconded to grant the two waivers. And we're basically approving the site plan on this. Right now, for, for the building, depending approval or replies and everything with fire, sewer, water, and a clarification from highway on where they want the granite curb.
Yes.
Hold on. I'm in favor of that motion, Charlie.
All right. And, and, all right, did I, did I include the agreement for the easement on there?
No, I don't think it did.
Which shouldn't be a problem. All right, we have a first and second. And I'll take our roll call of votes. John?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes, in favor.
All right, Michael, I vote yes. All right, on my, on this design review. Say, what is the opinion of the board? Do you have colors picked out for this on what you're using for your panels in the front of the building?
Uh, yeah, I think that was in the application. But Dennis can probably speak about that.
Uh, yeah, the, the concept right now is that the entrance panels be silver and the rest of the building be a gray. And the brick at the base be a gray and the architectural concrete block at the back be another gray. So we're, we're in the silver and gray palette.
Is that all glass on the front?
Glass and, and aluminum panels. Yeah, glass below, aluminum panels above, and aluminum panels around the, the entrances.
I like it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me?
I said that's all I have.
Uh, do you have any questions, Charlie?
I, I do not. I, I like the look of it. I think it's, it looks pretty nice, actually.
John, do you have any questions?
No, I pretty much agree with what Charlie just said. I think it's gonna be a nice-looking building.
Yeah, I see the AC units on the roof covered up by, by the entrance, which is nice.
I do, I did have one question. Is that, is that a parapet roof, or is it just that front?
Yes, it's a very slight parapet. It's a parapet only to contain the drainage. So at the center, the, it would, the parapet would be even with the roof. And then at the two narrow ends, it would be maybe 14 or 15 inches scupper on either side, as well as roof drains.
Okay, very good. And is it, what's the construction? Masonry with...
Steel, steel, steel frame, masonry, veneer cavity wall. And of course, insulated panels with the ACM on top in the, of it in the, in the front.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the design review.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, you have a person on the design? All those in favor of the design?
Charlie, oh, sorry.
All right, go ahead, Charlie.
I'm in favor.
You heard?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
All right, Michael, I vote yes. All right, so you are, you are approved. So now pending everybody's return on water, sewer, fire, place, and how you make out in conservation.
So Mike, are we gonna continue this just to see those, or are we gonna put those as condition?
I suppose we could make them all conditions pending approval that we get everything back.
Yeah, I think we can, I'm okay with making it conditions.
Yeah, and the condition on not eating the food is a big thing. Do we have any other comments?
I, I did, I did have one other question. When are we, when are they looking to start construction if the approvals all go?
Soon as we can. Our intent is to move forward right away.
All right, very good.
Do you have any discussion with conservation at all?
Yes, they've actually conducted a full review. They, they are still not scheduling any meetings, so that's what's held us up with conservation. We were hoping to, to do it simultaneously with this application. So Beta Engineering reviewed the notice of intent and the environmental aspects. Henry Nova reviewed the drainage calculations and compliance with the Stormwater Management Act and conservation requirements. We got comments back from them. When we went through this round of revisions to address Pat Brennan's comments, we also kept in mind Henry Nova's comments and addressed them as well. We're, we're gonna resubmit these revised plans with the Loma application and some other information they were looking for, you know, probably by the end of this week. But again, we're hoping that they'll schedule a meeting very quickly on this. But it's good for us that we have the engineering, the environmental review pretty much completed.
All right, so you get approval from us, like you're gonna talk with the chairman of the zoning board to see if he does want you to come back and get that scheduled as soon as possible?
Yeah, I think, well, you know, again, their decision, they wanted the final, final plan. So if conservation has any further changes, we can incorporate everything in, in that. We could, I mean, we have to make a few changes here with the, with the granite curving, for one. And if anything else comes up that we need to address, you know, with the fire department or the sewer, we can incorporate those changes as well. We can send that along to the ZBA, just so that they're up to speed. And then, if we have to follow up any other changes, we will.
I'm looking around here, like, see if any... When, when do you meet with conservation?
Yes, they still haven't scheduled a hearing for us. They tried a Zoom meeting, or maybe a couple, and it hasn't gone well. So we've been periodically reaching out to them, trying to get updates on meeting times. But we, we're in the queue for when they do meet. And I, I will follow up again with them tomorrow, hopefully, now that, you know, now that we've been through this process and approved here.
All right, so that's what, you will get everything together, you know? All the, all the conditions and our regular requirements for construction, we'll include those. All our general conditions. We can get a copy out to you. Nice. I wish you guys luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, Zero Hingham Street was continued at their request. So they will be scheduled for September at our next meeting.
I talked to him today, the... Excuse me, I can't think of his name.
Kevin?
Kevin. And he expected to be ready for the next meeting. Couple things came up, and they didn't wanna leave things in the air. Congratulations, Charlie.
Thank you all, I appreciate that.
Congratulations, Charlie.
Yeah, I was called out on a, on an incident, so I apologize for that.
Work comes first.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I looked over the plans. I, I'm pretty, the only thing I say, my only concern with all that stuff for that 1015 is the traffic there. But it sounds like they're, they're gonna be able to make it work, so we'll give them a shot, I guess.
Yeah, they had the calculations from last time and everything fell with, fell within the rules and regs of everything, it wasn't a big distraction.
All right, good.
We'll see how it goes.
Yeah. Yeah, because I, I mean, as you all know, I, I think that over the next two years, Hingham Street's gonna explode. And we, we definitely need to be, kind of have that on the radar to figure out, you know, what our response is gonna be, because somebody's gonna have to do something between Home Depot and Reservoir Park.
Yes.
Okay, cool.
All right. All right, the only stuff we have left is administration. So I'd like to thank Pat for joining our meeting.
Thank you.
See you in a month. Have a good night, Pat.
All right, thanks, guys.
All right, thank you. All right, stuff we have, administration. We have the minutes from the July 28th meeting. Everyone's had a chance to review them. Does anybody have any questions or anything? All right, can I get a motion for approval?
And will we approve them, John?
Can I get a second?
I wasn't there, so I can't second it.
Ah, that's right.
Charlie.
Um, yes, hang on, hang on.
No, Charlie wasn't there either. It was Randy.
I think you'll have to table these for the next meeting.
We have to table.
Yeah, we'll have to table that, that's true. Then both were out. All right, we will table the minutes to September. All right. The, next on the agenda is to pay the secretary for tonight's meeting.
Absolutely.
Motion to approve.
Thanks, guys.
We already have a first and a second to pay the secretary. I'll do a roll call of vote. Charlie?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Michael, I say yes. Good news for you, Chrissy.
Thank you.
And upcoming activity. We have Zero Hingham Street that was pushed, coming up to us on next week. What else we got? Haven't heard anything on 365 Concord Street. They were going through zoning. Wendy's is back on track. They seem to be doing, doing a lot of stuff down there, putting up a building.
Yeah, they got walls up and everything now. You still can't get a hamburger, Jared.
Not yet, anyway.
It's coming, though.
I was gonna say, within a couple months, I'm sure they wanna get that thing open soon. I mean, they wanted it open in July, so they're probably looking at October. Uh, do you have any, anything, John? Has anybody stopped by?
The only thing really that's come in is that vacant automobile dealership where Sunday was. I don't know, Charlie may be aware of it, but that's going to become a Jaguar and Land Rover dealership.
Yes, I, I had heard, I had heard rumor of.
Didn't we hear that a few years ago? Well, they submitted paperwork to the building department. So I think it's pretty much going forward. I think they might have a problem with signage, but we'll get that squared away, too.
Oh, that'll be nice, instead of a, a brand-new, empty building.
Right. They're not planning on making any changes to what I, haven't seen what they wanna do on signage, but I know they wanna do something, because they were asking questions. So that, but I think they wanna move fairly fast on that as well.
I assume it's still a prime dealership, right?
It's still a prime dealership, yes.
Okay.
That'll be a high-end cause.
Right. Just out of curiosity, with the signage, any chance we can get it to be a condition that it be called Rockland Land Rover?
Would be nice, but I would rather doubt it. But we certainly can keep it in mind.
Yeah, I mean, it would be a nice suggestion. I mean, it sounds kind of silly, but, you know, you go to Norwell, and it's Norwell Porsche and Lexus. Yeah, for some reason, it's South Shore BMW, a South Shore Volvo. Be nice to throw Rockland on, on the marquee like that.
Right, I have not looked at any of the paperwork that's come in yet. I'll probably get to that Thursday. And I don't know if there's any signage paperwork there or not. But they asked me about it last week, and I told them to try to keep the signs the same without, otherwise they're gonna have to go back to zoning.
Right. If you don't mind suggesting it to them, I would like it.
We will.
Yeah, I would second that. I would like it.
I would like. Jaguar, Rockland.
All right, uh, does anybody have anything else? Who is Linda's iPad?
It's not me.
All right, see?
Not me.
Not me.
Me.
I live alone, unless. Nope.
They left.
Get it away.
Either way, all right, they're gone, you know, all right. Do you have anything for us, Chrissy?
I do not. I think I've made sure you got everything over the last two days that you needed.
Yes, you've been fantastic. Thank you.
Probably can ask for a raise now.
Oh, wow. I hadn't thought of it.
Chrissy, actually, I did talk to, um, I did talk to a selectman about what we talked about a few weeks ago, and, um, I was assured that your position based on us being a separately elected board will be unaffected, um, which I know they told you anyway, but I put that plug in there anyway, 'cause as I said, I didn't like that bottom line budget vote, 'cause that allows them to pretty much do what they want. So I feel a little better about it now, though.
That's good. Thank you.
I did just think of something. I'm, I'm not sure if they're gonna be coming to us. I think they probably will, but we do have a brewery moving into town.
Yes.
And, uh, that's pretty, pretty confirmed now. They put it up on their Facebook the other day.
Which building, John? Is it the old Bowline Construction Building they're going to?
Yeah.
Um, well, they're probably. Looking for an old Rockland resident. That's nice, they can bring it to Rockland.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Well, I said, he's a veteran, it's veteran owned, and they live in Rockland, so it's nice they can, um, try and get that in Rockland. Waymouth, Waymouth's got enough breweries.
Where's it going?
On Waymouth, 77 Waymouth Street. I'm sorry, 84 Waymouth Street.
Used to be Bowline Construction, right around the bend, kind of across from, I think pretty much across from that plaza there with the, uh, uh, deli there, if you have the name of the deli.
Brown Bag Deli.
Brown Bag, thank you.
Oh, right in there.
Across the street from it.
Yeah, okay.
I met with them along with, um, Mike and, uh, Rob Rosa and Deputy Heaney. Oh, I guess it was two weeks ago, Mike, that we met with them. They're very interested in getting it open as soon as possible. It'll probably be right around the first of the year. I think it closes sometime in September in Waymouth. I do know he's got his lease from the landlord. Um, he does have to go to zoning, um, so I think they're gonna try to get to zoning in Octo- early October. Uh, they need a special permit to, uh, manufacture beer there, and they need to get a special permit to have a tap room and then get selectman's approval. But I know the, uh, town manager is in favor of it, um, big time, and, uh, so I, I don't think we'll see too much of a problem. And one of the selectmen, I understand, is a big craft beer person as well.
Yeah, it would be a nice addition.
Yeah, he, um, he actually, um, I, I know both of them, and he actually is a paramedic firefighter in Canton, um, and this was kind of his passion, and, uh, he's done quite well with it.
Yeah, they're carrying, I don't know, 15, 18 bran- uh, different types of beer right now.
Yeah, it's good enough in there. Uh, they, they've got a nice, um, they have a nice offering there. Um, they're on 53 in Waymouth right now. I, I highly suggest checking them out.
It'll be a nice addition. I hope that everything goes good for them. Sounds like it is.
That's about it that I got.
All right, so that's it. We'll bring the planning board to a close.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Third. I'm in favor.
All right.
I'm in favor.
John?
Yes.
Great, everyone.
Myself. That's it. Thank you very much. Uh, thanks, Chris.